Good pleasure, Matt. So, good evening and welcome everyone to the city Lakers Park City Council session for Thursday, June 12th, 2025. It's already June 12th. I'd like to call this meeting in order and to make our motion for adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Been moving the second, any discussion or comments? Bring on it's adapted adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, everybody. Council discussion topic tonight, excuse me. I apologize, I was was telling Daphne Murphy for Tony, I was up. A lot last night with a very, very sick Golden Retriever, so. A little faded and I've drank way too much espresso, so. Continue discussion regarding budget challenges and I'm going to. Ended up which were our famous facilitator, Mr. For Tom.
Thanks. So I think I'm gonna hold up on the first ones since I think customer legal is gonna show up. She's thinking like, if he's on this way, that's actually. Okay, anyways, all right. So I'm council member Riddle, you sent some comments to this to everyone. I'm wondering if you want to start us off.
I would absolutely love to start you off. Um, so. One of the things that I wanted to highlight is the activities or the the contracts that are things we just can't do enough. So we're not gonna run our own dispatch. We're not gonna have our own jail bill. So I was thinking these are. Required items that the city has less control over how much they cost. We can try to renegotiate contracts and such, but we're not gonna see. Any great deviance more than likely because we did our due diligence in these originally with these contracts. So I was focusing on those sorts types of areas of public safety. So dispatch, jail, insurance, emergency management. Racer and look, put just pull the numbers from our budget. And so the budget numbers that have been pulled up in that email. Were the by any, so then I added them. Cut in half and that's where I get the 1.33 million. For those and that would be covering one year costs. There's also other criminal justice, which is another 449,000. Budgeted, so again, half of that added to what I. Already talked about gets us to 1.556 million. The other piece that I don't have numbers for is what we have received from the North Sound Police Foundation. One of the things that I really like about the foundation is it lets us try new things and not be fully committed to them. So I believe they funded like the bull rap and the drone and did all these sorts of really great stuff. And I think that they're really good for that. It gives us a chance to explore more. Less than lethal or or safer options. What I would like us to look at. Being more in charge of and more in control of is like when they. I think they helped us with some radios and they, you know, did the equipment for the gym. And these are things that I as a city want us to do. So I think and that will free up North Sound to do more of these sort of. Experimental or first time or other sort of. Off offerings that they can have our police department try and then. In my mind, if they work like the grown program, I think it's gonna be pretty successful. Then, you know, then we adopted into our budget as to can maintain consistently. So. I would like to know, and I haven't asked for this yet, but what that. What parts of the North Sound Police Foundation would be things that I would like us to be like in the future? I'd like us to do these things. So let's give ourselves a line item for. That extra equipment. That we would be taking on. So that's where. I got to my number without more South Police Foundation money. It's not huge. It's more of a gesture of to them that we're gonna cover what we need for the the. Everyday operation of our police department to allow them to do those. Really cool stuff. So it wouldn't change the number drastically at all. But that's where I got to my number. I really appreciate. All of the conversations we're gonna be having about this and had about this. One of the things you'll notice is I stayed away from staff and staffing. It's really hard for me to understand. The ask. In this and then what do we, what is, what is it that we say if the levy doesn't go through? You know, we've asked for so that conversation with the community has to be incredibly clear. Of. You know, we're not proposing that we then let these folks go. Well, if we're not letting them go, why do I need to give you more money? So there's, it's gonna be a very clear. And concise conversation with the community as to why we're including that. And so. I thought let's just not include those. Dollars. And let those just stay in our regular operational. Bucket. So. Bit long-winded, but that's where I got to.
Right. So before I open up your questions, I think you have this, I can see administrative code may have some of the answers about the. Police Foundation that she was asked like they'll have no others available, but but not the numbers part, but basically about the costs and the recurrence of well.
I mean. To the point that most of what they have done for us have been one-time costs. But there are some ongoing implications of those, so. Bull rap. That's experimental that worked well to do that for ourselves going forward. They got us the canine. And the vehicle to. Support that position. That is now part of our fleet program. We've seen that during fleet discussions and listen to. Recapture those dollars a week, replace that at appropriate time. So. They are the. Unintended costs of those nice gestures that we have to address. So the psychics with the cheese to those of those dollars. So.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
But importantly, you need to assume the costs of the any recurring costs.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, the. Foundation does not pay to. And it's possible times.
Thank you. And I'm gonna break the order here a little bit, but I think to your other point about what if. I think Councilmember Goldman had some scenarios played out.
Yeah, so I've also been thinking about this and that, you know, what really, what is the story we're gonna tell the public? Why do we need the money? What are we going to use it for? That is for me critically important. I came to a different conclusion though, which is that for some of the external services like nine one one dispatch. We have to have those. And so it wasn't clear to me if we say we need this levy to help fund nine one one dispatch. It wasn't clear. What does that mean if the levy doesn't pass? Does that mean we cut our nine one one dispatch contract by 20%? And so fewer people can call nine one one. I mean, that that's not going to happen. And so it's kind of struck me that something like, say, we're gonna pay for use this levy to defray nine one one costs or jail costs. That felt nebulous to me. And so I was thinking, you know, what would be concrete would be. Our membership. So our membership in Nemco, our membership in racer. And so that we can tell the public and personally, I think it would be a huge shame if we left racer due to lack of funding. But that is a concrete consequence of this. Or with the police staffing, if we say, well, you know, we we're gonna have retirements in the next few years. And if this levy were to use to pay for three positions. And if the levy doesn't pass, we're just not going to restaff those positions. That again is a concrete loss to the community. That's something that can be part of our story is to say, well. With three fewer officers, here's what's going to happen to response times. Here's what's going to happen to how long it takes to investigate cases. Again, I don't want us to to go down the path. I think if we look at some of our neighboring cities that are basically triaging their nine one one calls and saying, well. This call is not important enough to go to. I don't want us to go there. But it does. It's a story that we can tell the community that if we need to start. Drawing down the size of the police department. Here's the consequences to the city. So that's kind of, and I didn't come up with a specific number, but just to say that. My preference would be that if the levy is used to fund concrete things where we can say. This is the level of service we're going to have with the levy. This is the level of service, if any, we're gonna have without the levy. I think that makes the story more clear.
So one thing, one comment I have is that. The you've got the updated one-page levy. Draft thing. And the only thing that's changed on that is notice that under category, I dropped it to main maintain police staffing levels in an effort to be. Well, essentially make it more generic, but you'd suggest leave the three positions in there, but.
I'm I'm not wed to three as the exact number, but I think to say that, you know, the amount of this levy would cover this many positions. In addition to race or membership, you know, I think that the more concrete we can be, I think it makes the story better to the community.
Thank you. All right. So I'll open it up to discuss either customer little or customer Goldman's cops.
Okay, so on on your on your thought process, would. Would the funds only be used for those things or would they be used for other things too? So I mean, those additional costs. I don't know what those would add up to. It'd be interesting to see what those amounts would be.
And I don't have an exact answer other than say, I think that would be my my. Priority would be to say, let us get as big a fraction of the levy as possible. Let us show here's where it's going to be allocated to these concrete things.
That's how I'm sorry.
That was kind of the hair I was trying to split earlier on this week with the our legal support is if we have certain comments there, how far can we deviate from that? Or can we be. A kind of bucket that is like a catch-all level. We're not 100% limited to these because we don't want to be handcuffed with this new opportunity and say, come to not. So. Think the wordsmith of it is very important, but it. I just want to make sure we're all on the same understanding that I thought what she had said was that. Whatever we put in writing, we can't really. Deviate from that. At very much of all, even if it's under the umbrella of public safety, we can't really go further than. Is listed is that are all our understanding.
Yeah, I think that that's the balance of, is it just a public safety levy? With no discretion. And then the community is just gonna be like, what am I getting for it? Yeah. But when we give the discretion, yes, we do have to hold to what we tell. The community and put in the documents.
One more question. So if so, okay, going down the train of thought. Councilman Goldman, if we don't do the levy, then. We're not gonna have those services anymore. Or what would be, what would would we be going into reserves at that?
And I think to echo what the mayor's language, that's gonna be a discussion when we hit our budget discussions for the 27 eight by any of. Is to start making those hard choices as to do we withdraw from racer? Or do we slash park maintenance funding? Yeah, both of which could be coming from the general fund.
And. If I can talk about unallocated funds now, is that a okay deviation? One of the things that when I think about allocated funds, I'm thinking those one-time needs. And I don't feel comfortable putting. Operational budget needs into that. Unallocated funds, because then if that's where we start kind of. Compounding budget over budget. But if there's a one-time need, you know, we need to buy one. Buy a new something. We need to buy hot air balloon. Then that will come out of the unallocated funds. And then the reserve reserve is truly the world crashes we use, but. I've not, I wouldn't advocate for using unallocated funds for ongoing like sounds.
Just quickly on point, I think Administrator Hill has some experience with one-time funds and expenditures. Where. The the. Counsel at the time had considered using for. Not a hot air balloon, but an investment for the community. My five, maybe 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 once a hotter balloon. It was not in the survey, so we'll have to add that next month. But thoughts on that film.
Yeah, I mean, it's it wasn't this municipality, but you know, when you do have those allocated reserves and you watch them for time and you see. There's a history. Of those and this would be in the community where you go revenues and CDA expenditures. That's when you get back to the community for those that they desire. You do those one times out, but then you also have to consider. The same as your. Foundation, what are your ongoing costs that you sign yourselves up for? Same as we did the purchase of late from the park. What what are we setting ourselves up in the future? So it does provide you some opportunities. You sure? I think a lot of things that have to shift here because, you know, we're talking about making up a deficit, talking about raising. And so much revenue that we're just plowing money to savings, but there may be some opportunities where you do those one times. You do. Buy the bull wraps and try whatever day example, maybe on.
The building. Situation we just. Have been in like our facilities. That's a that's definitely was unforeseen and one hopefully. Do time. That's a great use of those spots. It's an example.
For the comments? Okay, so to 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 say back to you what you said, the difference between the one pager here and what you're proposing is that we. Bundle in all of the costs as opposed to a portion of the increased portion of them.
Correct.
It's pretty clear. Yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna shift focus now. I want to first acknowledge Councilman Lebo. Thank you for putting in the work for basically getting the draft resolution together. Those great, thank you. And I understand that it passed through legal.
Actually, I'm not aware of that. Red lines. Looks like it must have been through later. Even those kinds of comments or she.
So I think you and councilman would good have basically these proposals put forth.
We I would like, we would like to report the proposal for the council to consider. And I don't see him hand out the the other type of those physicals. Is there an opportunity to bring that? Because I think that's important to understand. The question was being asked before. Why? How much? What for? For how long? Because I think it would be helpful to understand. What we're. Seeing the. A long term. So helping us. Describe what you have mapped, but how long now? I doubt it. Is there an opportunity that?
Yeah, I'll kind of join you, be taking through that.
I'm I'm making assumption that everyone has.
Does some member Saunders have it?
I believe that.
I I think I I think I sent it out. So, yeah. Yes, I was honest. Do you do you have a? Okay, great. Thank you. Close the door partially here. It's pretty loud from dispatch.
So it's a draft. I'll try to the council is. Wanting to put forth as a level and the reason for it is that there's an imbalance between. Anticipated. In our most current by any where we use some of the unallocated research from unallocated. So. Part of this is just formula X says, okay, we want to put together the level. Question that. I would recommend that. We'd recommend that. Align as a public safety. And in it, there are several things that would list or affect that. Nine eleven dispatch services, jail services, prosecution, public events, mental health presses, intervention, per vax along these. Inspirations and benefits. There's always the language that they have. But for or not including or others that might be appropriate. And so the idea is that we describe in general terms what the purpose of this. Love me this for. And that there is typically in supporting documentation, whether it's part of. Of information that goes to the public that describes the need. And I think these kind of things here. As presented before represent why we have the which is that we're seeing increased cost of important expenditures. For services such as nine one. Jail services. Mental health and others. So I don't think you want to be tied to a very specific list of dollars. That we can poseable. This doesn't mind you that should be only spent exactly. The goal is to. Align our revenues with anticipated expenditures to aid the services that we have. There's a desire to increase services that. I'll stop there. Try and put forth, I think everyone is before the. Why we need to do this. Try and put forth and how we do this and what we asked them. When to stop there.
Does anybody have any comments or questions of councilman Lebo here? I I do have one, which is, so. You know, I I understand what you're saying that we we. We need to figure out some way. To fund these ongoing needs, but the part that I take a little bit of an issue with is, for instance, the increase in. Let's say. Jail costs. That's not something we can really do a great deal about. I mean, you know, we we shop for the best deal. We look for basically, you know, where we can get those kinds of services at the best cost for the public. And yet basically we can't not do that. Without endangering public safety. So am I understanding you correctly that we would not go to that level specificity, even though. Clearly demonstrates what we really need to get done.
So I I tried out. Why do we need to see increases and balances? And that this levy would be used to fund those kinds of increases that we anticipate seeing because we're already. A deficit. So they're intended to. Describe. Kinds of uses of. So I'm not proposing that we say we're gonna renegotiate our dispatch services or jail services. Renegotiate any. Contracts that we have the property. To the extent that we go forward into our opportunities, we should always investigate those opportunities. But I'm not suggesting that we're promising. Do that this, but rather. Say, this is why we. We've seen increases in these, we anticipate that those do, we are ready now. The death so that we are ready to better interest. To maintain the services that we think that are appropriate for the city citizens to come to expect.
It's so. Anybody else before I continue? So just to clarify then, so the language that's in the. Levy proposal reflects that there is the need that doesn't tie us to a particular set of expenditures.
Now, in the second page. This is bottom of third page self. For uses of levy proceeds. So this additional revenue generated by this letter shall be exclusively public safety services, including but not limited to. At least that be trained with a nine one one dispatch emergency. In pushing to kill services. Services that reduce the user's cost to not. So that's the purpose of basically we use them. Right. So the first part describes. Why we need this, we see. We want to put a levy out to generate. These are the services for which we will. Use those in case we need. And there's no dollars attached to this.
I want to interrupt you. So the the document that. Sorry, you may have various money as go forward. Is also part of that education that was frequently asked questions. And so we never anticipated the dollar amounts go into this. That would be suicidal. That's probably the wrong term to use. That that would not be a wise choice, but. The one thing that has heard time and time again from the public is. Show me where you have these costs. Prove to me that they exist. And so that's a good work to have done to do that. Also, number that's right. It doesn't belong to this document.
I was tired.
I I think that, well. Those specific costs. The nine one one and the dispatch and all of those things, those are the things that have increased exponentially above anything else that the city has. And. I think that it's easy to demonstrate that separately from this document that. We have the, you know, these costs used to be this on this year, this on this year, now they're here. And you can see just by tracking those costs on an annual basis. What the increase is and it's a huge, it's a huge jump. I mean, it's not a normal increase, not two percent or four percent. It's. Huge, like 50%, 25%. So, you know, I I think that. You know, you have separate documents to. Demonstrate what you're trying to do, but you don't want to tie it down in carols. They're they're stuck with that, you know, you're limited. Not stuck, but limited probably.
So I think just to finish my comment, then. I I think what I was trying to understand was that you and I are not fundamentally disagreeing.
If councilmember Saunders is looking for us to speak up. Oh, oh, sorry, you listen, we've got to use our outside voice.
Outside voice. And you every now.
Can you hear me now? I missed that.
Eleanor. Should we do a test here? Can you hear us? Okay.
Test.
Well, that was an outside voice for sure.
That is so much better that I I really couldn't hear you guys at all. I had the volume all the way out.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah. If I may, I'm also not fundamentally. Opposed to the kind of language that councilmember Lebo has put in there and I agree with the city attorney for the. City administrator that we don't want to put that level of detail into it. The resolution or ordinance, whatever resolution or actually a packet. Then I'll do, but we need to be able to communicate. And so for me, coming up with these numbers was more, how do we communicate to the. Community what they're getting for this.
I I think tracking costs on an annual basis is something that everybody can see. It's this year was this, this year it's this, this is the percentage increase and then and then people can automatically see. That it's a huge number. If that's possible.
I think I think this is a really great discussion. I and and thank you personally, we both for bringing this. You know, this proposal to the team, I think. What what we're all trying to communicate is this founding, as we talked about before, this foundational job, it's not inflationary necessarily. It's, yeah, it's tied, but it's. It this is, this is the new level at which we have to operate. And how do we communicate to the community? That there is no choice. If you if you choose. We're in a place, we're gonna have to cut other services because these services are. Are essential. We're not going to cut those services. We're not gonna cut, we can't cut nine one one. We can't cut insurance. We can't cut some of these other other. Line items, if you will. And I think that that really it's it's how to communicate that. And I think you you all are are taking a great. Approach this. And I think it, I think again, it comes back to. Here's here's the bundle of things that that are sort of, they're immutable. You cannot, you have to, we have to go with those. And then the choices will be. Other things that could be very consequential. And then after. Go ahead.
I was. Getting kind of underlying what you're saying. So I think back to just when you're interviewing all the candidates, you all had asked, what? Should we do? And I think every single person said, oh, we should renegotiate these contracts. And you had shared something at our last meeting. So that's. That's not on the table. And I think that that's going to be a common place that most people go to is. Let's just renegotiate it. It's not, it's not that simple. So more just a common food for thought that those are the things that they heard. And then, you know, we only get a 30-second sound by the. And if we can't eloquently communicate it, we have to figure out how we shape that so it doesn't go straight to what we just renegotiate or bring these in house, which we know is not feasible.
I agree that I think identifying. You know, how the why and where for us about renegotiating those contracts or primer. You know, paragraph on it, what might be, might be helpful for people. You know. Why haven't we done it? Or why, you know, why? Did we? You know, I would think that if there was a chance to do it, it's probably been done. So.
Yeah, I think I think the history on how we got here is important too. We did our due diligence getting to these contracts. We did look at options. And there aren't that many options for some of these, you know, for dispatch, for jail, but we looked, I know there was a. A a wide net cast and they're. While this is larger than what we were getting from the. Baffle budget for like dispatch, it was significantly lower than the other option. So we are doing our due diligence. It would be great if we could negotiate something, but costs are only going up. And I think one of the. One of the pieces that makes me a little bit nervous is things like jail. Insurance, even like emergency management. These are things that are outside entities determining what it is. These are things that are outside entities determining what it is, and. We have to, please correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but we have to take certain uh individuals to, I think it was King County Jail, if they if they're accused of felony. Right, and they're gonna charge whatever they want to charge, and that is like a high metro area cost, and so. You know, our other option is that lower cost jail that's uh in Eastern Washington. But we're, so we're doing what we can. But i- there's only so many jails you can look at, and there's only so many that will take us that aren't, you know, already, you know, filling up, so. I just wanted to say that historically, we've been doing everything we can to keep these costs down. Um, but those are the ones that could jump, King County just decides to raise, that's what we have. Do we put felons in the jail, or do we let them free because we can't afford it? I mean, that's. You know, we have a right to our community to keep it safe, and the the chief wants those folks to go where they belong and to see justice that way. So uh which in this case would be jailed till they can see a judge. And I just, yeah, I just, it's tough decisions to make, but these are things we have to pay for, for the community that we are in uh. In care of, you know? Sorry.
I mean, your point's well made, um.
Sorry, I just, I wanted to speak to the conversation on contracts. So for Alprez brought that up and um renegotiation.
You need to be for Helen.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah.
Sorry, Eleanor.
Let us know if you can't hear us. Split us off a wave or a.
Sorry, I'm speaking quietly from the back of the room, so renegotiation of contracts and how that's not feasible, that's something that we can put into our frequently asked questions to get out to the public. But just a few I wanted to mention, like, you think about the the guilt CBA that you just um adopted. Now, that is a contract, that's a negotiation that we go through every three years, and while we have some control over that, we are in a much larger pool. And the chief will tell you the competition is fierce, and so we only have so much control, especially with our comparative cities of what we pay, and that CBA for this next. Term is over twenty percent increase over those three years. That's real cost, and that's coming out of savings. Um prosecution, I gave an update, um that Deputy Mayor submitted. I met with our prosecuting attorney this morning, we have not redone that contract for over twenty years, so. She is paid less than our public defenders um and does far more work, that reck. That is what's going to come before you as far as increases, that she's identifying. Some of that will be paid more by the O two fund because it's related to traffic cameras, but these are real costs, and then public defenders, Councilmember Goldman sent you out. The stuff from the beginning of the week. Within ten years, that could potentially be a threefold increase of what we need as far as public defense, and that's already hard to come by and get good good public defenders. Um and it will start. Peeling away that they will be doing ten percent less per year. Every year, starting in twenty twenty six, I expect Ken Harmel from the firm to give you a call any day to say, here's what it's gonna take.
And and to describe, they're doing, they're not allowed, their their limited number of cases is going down. But the total number of cases we'd be asking them to do would be the same, so that means hiring additional people, and that's where the public defender costs will go up.
Their misdemeanors go from four hundred a year to a hundred and forty or a hundred and twenty somewhere, and that it's it's basically a third.
Good. So going forward, I wanted to look at. Talk about why we. And how we need to do it. What would it pay for? But how much do we need to do it? And the simple answer is it's six year levy. What we can do. Takes a lot of time and effort to put a levy together, there's no expense to do that, so we want to be considerate of our taxpayers, because you put up one year levy. Do it all over again. That's just too much of it. We are permitted to do a six year levy. So I would propose the new four, it's a six year levy. Now the question is how much? So these numbers come from. Our projection for this biennium as well as the next two biennium. So we look at, for example, line eight, column B, it shows that in this current biennium, we use approximately get a hundred twenty two thousand dollars for. Balancing for general funding category. So that either twenty two or two thousand was from our. Tendency. And then going forward, these are just the general funds. Director Vaughn, I'm sure will check the numbers for you. Um but as you see in line eight, uh, leave a quantity here. The delta grows, and then I broke up twenty thirty point, because if you pass the six year levy, it takes effect in twenty one six. We will only be through the twenty thirty one uh calendar year, which is half of my year. So. Uh and then I ran a couple of different options, and those are lines nine, twelve. Fifteen. Those represent whether it's thirty two cents, twenty four cents, or sixteen cents per thousand dollar. And our current uh levy rate for twenty twenty five, I've got it right, it's line twenty one. Where you see it's about seventy cents per two for a thousand dollar. And every, there's a typo there, should be every twenty zero. Now it is one one zero. Generates about forty nine thousand dollars from ground, yeah. For. Per year. So that's why if you take the zero one sixteen to generate. Seven hundred and fifty four thousand dollars to care, so that's where they come from. Not to try and do math on TV. But what it does show, and this is in lines uh ten fifteen and sixteen, is over that six year period. If you, how much money would you generate based on what we forecast, and does it generate more or less than what we are forecasting? So in the case of thirty two cents per thousand um in six years are allocated. Fund that will be controlled by nearly five million dollars. Whereas at sixteen cents. Your eight thousand dollars. Now, these are just forecasts, one can't tell you whether or not our expenditures revenue are going to be as rejected now, what we do know is the numbers are going to be different. Question is, oh, what do you want to do? And so on lines twenty five, twenty six, and twenty seven represents. For example, if it's a thirty two cent increase, that's a forty five percent increase to our local property tax. That's the way it's gonna get represented. Now, we we know that our uh property tax pays for more than our city services, and we get about eight and a half percent.
Seven point.
Point nine. Seven point seven, seven point seven.
Just under eight percent of our property tax goes to city services, but when people talk about increases, they will talk about. It's not sixteen cents or thirty two cents, they'll talk about it, it's a we very twenty three. Thirty four or forty five percent increase in your global property tax. It shouldn't be, both of them are true statements, right? And then finally, um, I want to bring a proposal to you next. She's an increase in her sales tax. So.
Based off the HSB twenty fifteen, I believe.
Yes, yeah. On so lines eighteen shows what that would generate, so revenue. Several reasons coming forward next week, why not? The advantageous ones. Sales tax increase of that amount is automatic. I don't, we can do that, but doesn't have to go into a book. Broadening our revenue sources so that we're not just property tax or just sales tax always benefits us along, because. While they do track some relationship. Good have some, so the sales for that whole part, property taxes are so. That represents an example where. Over a six year period. Ten of one. And of an increase in our sales guidance.
So from ten point three to ten point four percent.
Thank you, and it's. We generate that one kind of. So I represent that as an example that if you decide to go with, as we are, let me that, we might think about how much we want in that levy level based on some other actions. Yes.
I would like to see a model or a. For example, I think that the average home in Lakeport Park saves a million dollars. And I'd like to see what each one of those percentages would be on an annual basis, so people have a frame of reference, because they might pick up on. You know, it's forty five percent, but maybe the dollar amount is more platable. But but also, you know, as a senior person and someone who's on social security, at least for now. That uh you know, a lower uh, you know, I'm I'm in favor of a lower amount as opposed to a higher amount, just because. We don't, you know, social security doesn't have. Automatic increases all that often, and that's sure not enough to keep up with the question.
Easy with the model.
Good. I can just give you a quick answer on the thirty two cents, because Director Vaughn's already done it, so the value. Current value of a home. It's a median value? Correct.
Yeah.
It is nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in Lakeport Park, so that is two hundred and ninety two dollars and forty eight cents per year, or twenty four dollars and thirty seven cents of that thirty two cents.
Twenty four.
Twenty four thirty seven. So we can break the rest out for you, but just to give you an idea of what the topic looks like. That's all I've got.
Thirty two cents.
We only did thirty two cents, this is a new proposal, so.
So uh you sixty cents.
Yeah. In the middle.
Um, this proposal does have a a senior citizen.
Right.
Antisocialities.
Yes.
So these numbers represent uh just totally without getting into account, a reduction of. Or the.
So sorry, that doesn't. It's on the fourth page, it's basically like. Um, thank you, John, uh thank you, Councilmember Lebo, um, I really appreciate the fact that you made this spreadsheet, and I do have one question about it, because I always check people's work right now, so. When I look at that and read it, um where it says balance, that's literally bankable balance, right? With the growth from, say, the twenty five, twenty six biennium to the twenty seven, twenty eighth biennium of GF revenues is literally just organic growth, right? Just basically, I think you put that at a five point eight percent, you're assuming a five point eight percent increase.
I use the figures that were generated by Director Vaughn.
Okay.
To represent both the revenue increase and profit, right expenditures. Now, those are just forecasts, and as we know, there are a lot of things that can cause our revenue expenditures to be different than what we forecast.
And so to finish my question, uh that four point nine million dollar figure you have boxed there, which is the sum of the previous four columns. Um uh the bold faced numbers, so that's not included in that, was that row six uh revenue then? It's not been bundled back into there.
No, where rows uh six and seven were are what are projections, forecasts, so that just says. They just come right out of our. Issues based on biennium as well as the next two biennium. Say, this is what's forecast, but in terms of revenue expenditures, and then line eight represents the difference.
Thank you.
And then so uh in this example of line nine, which is a thirty two session increase. I see the amount that would be generated for each of those periods, and then, for example, there. Line eight, after, you see that our delta for those periods is about. Five thousand dollars, but we generate. I would tell you that. So and after that, we have the notes that. This is just a very basic part, what is this, you can now can. Right.
Yeah, I think all of us are gonna check that, so we'll. We'll we'll talk again about this, all right, so um I want, yeah, I want to be uh mindful of our time, and and I want to basically give um. Councilmember McCartney a bit of a fore too, because um on Monday at the at the cow, the meeting of the whole meeting, we'll be talking about that uh ESHP twenty fifteen potential sales tax increase. I, Councilmember McCarney, you also had an interesting revenue generation idea.
Yeah.
Are you, I I am I putting you on the spot here, so if you're not prepared to talk about it, it's okay to not, but.
Yeah, well, I think we probably want to do a little bit harder search around, more specifically around the real estate tax. At, we're at about point five, looking at what other counties and cities are doing, and it is between point two five to two percent. And so just looking at it financially, we were to be bump up to point seven five, what kind of revenue would that generate based on the cost of the homes? And the idea around that was that maybe we're not hitting our residents immediately with the cost of a levy. Uh but putting it in the real estate tax, the excise tax, so when people are selling their homes, then that money is realized, and so in the model that I have worked up, I still want to double check the numbers, but it generates. Quite substantial amount of revenue based on what we have done in the last three sixty five uh at the city of Lake Forest Park. And the reason why I have that element, bring that up, is because people bristle when we talk about property taxes to hit them right away, and that, which I understand, but was trying to figure out a way of how could we generate. Meaningful funds that does. Immediately, and rather hit people when they are selling their homes. Uh one of the other concerns that we've heard about on planning commission was just developers building large houses to make money, and so this would be an element. Could look to make some more money on people that are already selling homes in this area. So that was just one idea, looked to chase it down a little bit more, like, well, we're gonna iron it out, is is that even a possibility?
Go ahead.
I will definitely have to research if we have control over changing the rate, I do know that recent legislation uh did change it. Um so that if the home value is within certain brackets, the real estate excise tax that is paid to the city. Uh does, is variable now, um what those exact percentages are, I'd have to go check at MRSC. Uh but I do know that changed recently, and so, but I don't know if we actually have control over the rate. Uh, so I'll have to confirm that, too, which can easily be done, I I mean, I can send some emails and do some research, and we can have that by Monday easily. But the other, the real estate excise tax, the other. Uh, just a quick concern I have about that, it it. We cannot use those funds for public safety, so real estate excise tax ties specifically to your capital improvement projects, your CIP. Um and your capital improvement projects, and I know that they have. Created some leniency within the real estate excise tax recently, um with exit, real estate excise tax two specifically. Um to allow you to use it more for operations, which is a little bit of a, I have mixed feelings on that, I'm gonna just on that. Uh because it's it's back to that same challenge of one time using uh one time funds for ongoing. So I would have to double, I, there's a, there's definitely some things that I will have to check to be more prepared to come to the conversation to where we're giving, it's more thoughtful. Um but those are my just outlined concerns upfront um with the public safety, if the public safety. Is what we're attempting to go after um. If and look at that umbrella, then we would definitely want to go down the path that we are with a levy versus, but the real estate excise tax. Um I think it's just solid research to do, so we're educated on that front anyway, and so we just bring that back to the whole council. For some good hallmark period, so that we we know.
All right, so Councilmember Levo, then Councilmember Goldman, then Councilmember.
Quickly. I'm sorry, we could just table this.
No, I think the need is that there's a difference between our long time. Revenue expenditure to maintain our existing service of what a level. Appropriate for those city like here. If this levy proposal does not pass this fall. I don't think it's reasonable for us to say that our services for twenty one six are going to be less. Or fewer, because we've already budgeted. And there is contingency in the event that some of our expenditures receive, but our anticipated revenues are already for. Cities, we do have, I mean, allocated. Fund. Bound. So I I'm not supportive of saying if you don't pass this levy in twenty twenty five, services twenty twenty six are going to be reduced.
Yeah, two quick thoughts, so first, I want to thank Councilmember Lebo for that spreadsheet, it's uh good to see the detailed numbers. I think when it comes to us choosing the levy rate, I think trying to strike that balance that we want to make sure that it's maintaining the. I think when it comes to us choosing the levy rate, I think trying to strike that balance that we want to make sure that it's maintaining the level of our own allocated. Fund balance, um, but also accounting for that we're gonna have unexpected things such as tripling our public defender loads. Uh, and then when it comes to education, I think something you saw four years ago, uh, there was a fair bit of community confusion. Uh, between the local property taxes going up by thirty two percent versus. Your entire property taxes going up by thirty two percent, and so. It's gonna be very important for us to get ahead of it for this election cycle, to make sure it's clear to the community what will or will not be changing. With this levy.
Doing math on TV, I believe it's a three point five percent increase. If we, for just our amount, two year total uh levy, based off of. The King County's total levy rate of three point one seven five four six per tax year twenty twenty five. Now, we know that other things play into that, other jurisdictions do raise, but our percentage of that growth would be at most three point five percent. Of the total that you pay. Not forty five percent, so. It's good to have both those numbers in hand when we have these discussions.
We need to wrap up. So really quickly, then, um. Many of the whole meeting on Monday, according to our governance manner of manuals, that's why we bring up ideas from house, new ideas from councilmembers. Uh, Councilmember Levo, would you like to pursue this, uh, the idea of the sales tax on Monday?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Councilmember uh McCartney, would you like to pursue the idea of the REIT uh Monday?
I think I.
That's very sorry, I mean to jump the gun, I apologize for that, okay, um, thanks, everybody, the one last question I have for staff is this, when was the last time there was a successful levy? In Lake Forest Park? I think answers. So even that forty five percent uh figure is in context of never ever having passed the levy. And I think it's important, contestually, if I may, technically, that. The city has grown um sevenfold since the way prior to that personal levy. So I think that the services and the things that have been taken on by the community have been. Have, the needs have increased dramatically, yeah, so we need to go upstairs, uh, we're a jerk here downs, downstairs, we'll move up to council chambers, thank you, everybody.